We will call this meeting, the Board of Commissioners, to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, we're getting an awful lot of feedback. I would ask you to please mute your speakers. Please go on mute so we don't get the background. We have several, we obviously can see some of the people who are on. We'd also like those who are not on with a picture virtually to please let us know who you are.
Commissioner Valendo, this is Tom Roberts. I'm not on virtually.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else? I'm just going to go. Doug, you are on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'd like to remind you, this is a-
Final number, is that Sheila?
I'm assuming it is. We are having a public meeting, somewhat public meeting. It certainly is a regularly scheduled meeting. To my knowledge, do we have any awards recognition in correspondence? All right. We have no minutes of previous meetings.
Mr. Sheriff, I believe we do have recognition to provide this morning.
Oh, okay.
I believe the sheriff is going to delete the recognition.
Oh, I forgot that. Sorry, Terry.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Murdock, Commissioner Alfredine, and Schaefer. As many of you know, last week marked the time that Oregon State Sheriff's Association normally meets. Normally, that's a meeting in person, but we had to adapt and overcome and do our virtual meetings. And so as part of that sort of ended in the year, we take a look at the past year and recognize through our awards ceremony, certain folks and individuals that have really gone above and beyond in the call of duty. And so those various sheriffs from across the state submit nomination forms to awards committee made up of peer sheriffs and commanders. They go through those various awards and decide, based on merit, the individual programs or individuals that will receive those awards. And so we did a lot of virtual work surrounding this, and actually later today, there should be a link that will be sent out publicly so the public can review and view the awards ceremony, a virtual ceremony, where during part of that, I speak and a number of other sheriffs will be speaking at. But what I really wanted this morning to be about is the recipients of those awards. As you may well know, our search and rescue program has been incredibly busy this year. You know, if you name it, from the number of flooding events that took place earlier in the year. I'm not going to read verbatim from the letters submitted because that will be read later today in the public version. But they stepped up above and beyond in ways that are really unimaginable. They put significant risk to their personal safety to go up and rescue people off the mountain during the flooding. They've stepped up through various other search operations, many times staying the night to perform those duties. Again, these are our search and rescue program that's made up of volunteers. And so I think that they are very deserving. And so through this process, the Oregon State Sheriff's Association Awards Committee would like to recognize Umatilla County Search and Rescue as the Search and Rescue Command Council Program of the Year. And so I can see on the screen, and I think that there's some of our search and rescue volunteers that are currently watching. I see one of our longstanding members, Jan Good. She is the backbone behind this program, along with the many volunteers that we have. A special thanks goes out to all of them for everything that they do. Their motto is, "We do this so others can live." And so very deserving. And again, you know, there's also through this process, there's our individuals that have stepped up this year and really kind of been on the front lines. And so there were a couple of volunteers that are also recognized through this process, William Morse and Bob English. They are both our OSSA Search and Rescue Command Council Volunteers of the Year. And again, you know, sort of bringing this thing full circle, and a person that is always there at all of these different events, and again, a significant component of all of this. Probably one of the highest awards a recipient can receive due to Oregon State Sheriff's Association through the Search and Rescue Council is Notorious Service. And that will be, it's my honor to recognize Dwight Johnson as the recipient of that award. And so, you know, thank you, everybody. Thank all the search and rescue volunteers, particularly those mentioned today. I'm looking forward to maybe a less busy 2021, but my hat goes off to them, and I can't say enough about this organization. Again, stay tuned for tonight's virtual awards ceremony through the Oregon State Sheriff's Association. During that, there will be also some, as many of you know, I was the president of the Oregon State Sheriff's Association for 2020. And as being the president, there are a number of local individuals that will be recognized this evening virtually. But I'm not going to let the cat out of the bag on those just yet. I know that there's some other items that we need to get to. But those special president recognition awards, I will be handing out later on this evening. And so I appreciate the time that you made available to me today to be able to recognize our search and rescue group. And again, stay tuned for later for the various president awards that will be going out.
Certainly, our hats are off to the search and rescue and the individuals who were singled out for personal recognition, that it gets high honor, or Umatilla County to be recognized at the OSSA Oregon State Sheriff's Association level for that. And again, I add my congratulations to all those who have been recognized.
Yes, thank you, Sheriff Rowan. This brings considerable honor to the county, but I think I would also be remiss if I did not thank you for your service to the Oregon State Sheriff's Association. We certainly have been honored by that as well. So congratulations to all involved. We can't be more specific until tonight's unveiling, but I will very appreciative of the wonderful work that's been done. Commissioner Schaefer, would you like to add comments?
I do. I just want to congratulate you, Sheriff, on your team. I know how hard they work and what a dedicated group of individuals they are. Congratulations. I can't think of a more deserving group of individuals for these awards. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. All right, are there any additions to the agenda? Any public input before we move on? Doug, do you want to introduce each of the items, or do you want me just to, I have the pinkies in front of me, to call on the people that are presenting if they're here?
Oh, it'd probably be a lot easier if you just went ahead and introduced it.
Okay, the first item is a radio purchase, and I believe I see Dale Primar on the screen.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Dale Primar, Director, Umatilla County Community Justice. My request before you today is a relatively routine one for us. As you know, we have certain duties that require us to do field work, and in that field work we do, we maintain contact with law enforcement via dispatch and arrest. The radios that we use in the past are no longer serviceable. And John, you probably know more of this than I do around the short band and broadband and all these other different bands that, you know, that no longer work. So the reality of it is, is the old 900 radios or 90,000 radios that we were using are no longer in use, are no longer serviceable. And I'm looking to purchase four new radios, so two for each team. So when folks are out doing field work, they have portable radios where they can maintain contact with both dispatch and other law enforcement officers for a variety of reasons. The total cost behind that is $7,249.04. That includes the four radios and batteries and charging stations and the like. Purchase is made through a company called Raycom Critical Communications. I believe they have a state contract and contact the sheriff's office to determine what and where we need to buy. This is where we're steered forward. So that's the information I have, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Commissioners, any questions?
Don Halsey's position is safe from you, Dale. I don't think there's any question about that.
There are some things I don't pretend to know about.
But then I would make a motion that we authorize that purchase.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Item two, dispatch payable. Captain Primar, are you there or UnderSheriff Littlefield?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
As though I have Captain Primar here to present on this payable.
Okay.
Karen Primar, Communications Captain over dispatch. We received a bill from CenturyLink for one of the six stations in dispatch that OEM agreed to pay for five, but not the sixth position. Due to the change between Kathy and I and OEM sending the bill, CenturyLink, who knows the latest, and the understanding that the payable hasn't been submitted and it hasn't resulted in some link fees, I did reach out to CenturyLink to see if they would make it, but they have not removed it despite our request. The bound to the-
Hello, can anyone hear me?
And I believe the amount, the total payable is going to be $6,807.36. Any questions for me?
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, they've been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hello, can anyone hear me? The next item, number three, is creation of positions at the sheriff's office. Doug, are you going to do that? Or the sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Doug, you start.
The sheriff is ready.
Yeah, go ahead and start, Doug.
This is, there are two parts to this, and it's for a correctional position in the Civil Division and in the, is it Criminal Division, the other one? The sheriff?
The other one is in the Corrections Division.
The, my understanding, the dispatch position is the second of two positions, which we indicated we would seek to install if 911 revenues were sufficient. And the other is security based on realignments and rearrangements we made in the courthouse. Is that correct, Sheriff Rowan?
That is correct. The first was, you know, in anticipation for increase in 911 appropriations through a legislative change in the 911 tax. We anticipated about, in this fiscal year, about 170-plus thousand in additional revenue. And then beginning January 1, we'll see that second phase of that tax increase come into effect, which we will likely see that increase in revenue later in the year. However, with the combination of the two, we're looking at over 300,000 in additional revenue associated to those two increases. It is our belief that the two positions can be absorbed through that, through those monies, and really help mitigate the impact to our contracting agencies that contract dispatch services. Additionally, these are positions that are desperately needed in that we are currently, and still have been, or have been for a while now, in a staffing crisis that we're trying to address. And this will aid us in getting our numbers to, you know, essentially voices on the radio and people being able to be that first responder to 911 calls and whatnot.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I thought I heard Doug say Civil Division in the beginning, but this is for Communication, correct?
That is for 911, yes.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Are we covering all three positions? Are we taking these one at a time?
It should be one at a time.
Okay, I would move that we add the additional position in dispatch. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Second position is courthouse security, is that correct, in the jail division?
Corrections.
Corrections, okay.
I would make that motion that we fill that position.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. What else?
The left is the position that the jail for maintenance is overhired while there's one retirement coming.
Oh, right.
Consider it a later date, because I thought you only wanted a four-month overfill.
I'm sorry?
I thought you were going to do that at a later date, because you only wanted a four-month overfill.
Okay.
So what else is there, Doug?
Those two, we're in.
Okay, all right, we'll move on to vehicle lease. Robert or Counsel?
This is coming before the board for approval to lease a vehicle for the Public Health Division. They are in need of a pickup to help tow their trailer. This is also to allow them to get easier transport of the materials, particularly in light of the need for vaccinations coming up for COVID-19. So this is before the board to approve the lease for the pickup for Public Health.
I've been working with Joe and Robert on this, and I would make that motion that we approve that for-
Okay, Joe's on. Do you want to say anything, Joe?
I would just say that this, you know, we've, in the past, we've relied on other departments to help coordinate and make these moves, and the other departments have been very generous with their time and ability to help us do that. But in the time, the world we're in right now, sometimes we've got to make these decisions much quicker turnaround, and it doesn't give a lot of time for another department to make those adjustments.
Okay, do you have a motion? You started, Commissioner Schaefer, did you finish?
I think we already had the motion and the second.
Okay, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Public Health payable.
This is coming before the board for approval due to the amount. It's for additional public notice for COVID-19. It is for over and above what was previously approved. So this is a request for $10,000 in addition for radio advertising.
And has the funding come into Public Health for this from the state COVID fund?
Yes, it has. This is per request from our Hispanic community outreach stakeholder group. This is for specific radio advertising in MOM, which is a Guatemalan, or a, yeah, Guatemalan dialect that many folks in some of our smaller populations of the county speak. And we're told, listen to some of these radio stations, and so this is to try to get some of that messaging into that population. And this would be a virtual month campaign.
I would move approval. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Request for proposal, software. Counsel, are you going to introduce that, or is Riley? Is it Riley?
It's, so this is for our finance and HR system that we're looking to purchase because our current system is over 20 years old, and the vendor stopped supporting it around 10 years ago. The funds have been set aside from the Capital Improvement Fund and attached to the pinkie of the timeline for what we're hoping to get the RFP out for and get through the RFP process.
Questions of Riley?
Say that again?
Questions of Riley?
I have none, but I would move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to point out and thank Riley for his new position of leadership in charge of this move. It's much, much more complex and extensive than probably people imagine, but thank you, Riley, for your leadership.
And we'll have to guard to make sure he isn't pulled away from us by the State of Oregon for their employment division.
I don't think Riley wants to have to wear a tie every day. So item number six, or seven, post-retirement employment.
And I believe the sheriff is here to speak to that. There are two members of the Sheriff's Department that have requested for post-perse employment. And we deferred this at our last meeting because we did not have any indication from the sheriff that he supported or wished this to happen. So, Sheriff?
Correct. I was unaware, I saw the agenda item, but was unaware that it involved both UnderSheriff Littlefield and Captain Dave Williamson. Jim had just actually entered into this just a few months ago, and so we didn't realize that we needed to do him as soon as we did. And so, or seek approval as soon as we did, we thought that was a year-long appointment. And so I would just let the board know that both UnderSheriff Littlefield and Captain Williamson are valued. They're, I mean, they're my right and left-hand arms in terms of getting some of the projects and some of the very daunting projects that we've had in 2020. So I look forward to continuing to work with them into 2021. And so I would ask for approval that they be allowed to continue on with their post-perse employment.
Mr. Vice Chair, I would move approval of the request.
I would second that.
I would move and second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, item number eight, economic development grant. Gail, are you presenting that?
Good morning, Gail Nelson, Economic Development for Umatilla County, and I'm presenting in person with my mask on in the room because, just so people know, I called in on the regular phone line, and you really can't hear anything that's going on. So if you guys are expecting interaction with people, it might not be happening. Yeah, sorry for that side note. Okay, Economic Development, this is a grant that we, the grant committee approved back in December of 2019, so it's been a year. But it is for $10,000 for the Happy Canyon renovation, the Happy Canyon Room renovation at the Convention Center. And we had pledged $10,000 to it, but we would want, we wanted, we waited because we wanted it to be a specific, know specifically what the money was going to, not just the general renovation. And in that time, the Convention Center has gone out and has a commitment of $20,000 from the foundation, Pendleton Foundation Trust, $20,000 commitment from the Happy Canyon Foundation, and with our $10,000 from the county, that makes $50,000 that will match a grant offered by Mike and Jill Thorne. Their matching grants require the recipient to go out and gather $50,000 in commitments, and then they will commit theirs. So there's $100,000 committed to this project, and then there's also been $8,500 donated in memory of Fritz Hill to the project. So we feel confident as the Grants Committee that the $10,000 will be put to use much more overseen, I guess, by Greater Eastern Oregon Development Center, GEODC, is a fiduciary agent for the Convention Center's funds for the Happy Canyon renovation project. So this is simply because the amount needs to come to the board. We did bring all of the grants last December to the board just for general knowledge, but this one, we need specific approval of today for the $10,000.
At our staff meeting Monday, Gail, I ask you to follow up on this, and I appreciate the fact that you have done that and provided assurance to us where our money's going. So thank you for doing that. Is there a motion?
I move approval. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, CDA appointment. Counsel?
This is coming before the board to update the appointment on the Columbia Development Authority Board with the end of the term for Commissioner Alfredine. The county representative on the board will need to be updated. The proposal is that Commissioner Schaefer appointed to represent the county, but Gail Nelson continues as the alternate.
Is there a motion?
I move approval.
I'll second that in light of the difficult position it places Commissioner Schaefer in. All in favor, say aye. Aye, okay, thank you. You abstained, Commissioner Schaefer, I assume. Oh, it's order number BCC 2020084. Is that all right, Commissioner Alfredine, to include that?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Schaefer, can we report that you've abstained? Apparently. All right, we'll push through that later. Commissioner, I can see Commissioner Schaefer.
He just disappeared.
Commissioner Schaefer, can you hear me?
There.
What?
No, he's muted, however. John, you're muted. Okay. I don't know what happened there, but I got kicked off the meeting.
Well, I could help you with that technology. Okay, John, I simply asked that we, for the record, that you abstained on that vote.
I don't know what, I don't know what happened on the vote.
Oh, it was two to nothing for CDA, the appointments to CDA.
After all this complicated discussion and argument on it, we plan to. So it was as, as the.
As presented. It was as presented, yes.
Okay. So were you for it?
Yes, sir.
I was for it. There we go.
All right.
Sorry, I didn't.
We didn't know if you were abstaining or.
Cell phone, my computer, it takes me off my computer.
Okay, we didn't know if you were abstaining or voting. All right. Fair Board appointment.
Not on the call anymore, for whatever reason. I can, I can present that this, this comes to us, the term of Steve Anderson on the Fair Board will expire at the end of 2021. And as we've done here in the recent past, we're appointing a year early for that, for the backup position to that, so they have a year in place to learn the position and learn what they can contribute to the Fair Board. And this appointment is for Andrew Wagner, beginning January 1, 2022, and ending December 31, 2024. And Mr. Chair, I would move adoption of order BCC 2020-083.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Adams Community Benefit Board Appointment. With the term of Commissioner Alfred ending, the county representative on the Adams Community Benefit Plan Board needs to be updated. The proposal is to have Commissioner Schaefer be the county representative. Based upon conversation earlier, it's BCC 2020-085. Based on earlier conversation, I believe Commissioner Schaefer, that I would become that representative if there's approval from the board to make that change.
I would move approval of order BCC 2020-085.
Can you state the change, please?
I'm sorry, again?
Can you state the change, that it would be Commissioner Murdock instead of Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Is there a second?
That is part of the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, just for the record, that is based on conversations with Commissioner-elect Doran and his interest in being appointed to two other community benefit plans. So, all right. Sale of property. This is order BCC 2020-086, which by request is being modified so that we would approve the sale of the Cook Building, but the order would not include approval of the proposed lease. So BCC 2020 base 086 would only include approval of the sale of the Cook Building and related agreements regarding the support of the Hermiston City Hall, but it would not include, at this time, approval of the proposed lease agreement. Questions?
I've had opportunities to discuss this with counsel and also with finance. It appears to be quite a good proposition for us to enter into with the city of Hermiston. Gives us additional space, more place, more moderate space, by the way, and more accessible space within the city for the public to come to government services, particularly public health. And the cost over a 15-year period is pretty realistic. I think it comes in very, very well. So those are my comments, and I would be willing to pass the, or to move adoption of order BCC 2020-086 at this point.
As just proposed, with delaying the approval or discussion of the lease agreement, is that correct?
Yes. Yes, I think the lease agreement still needs to be vetted a little and some of the language in it clarified.
Okay, is there a second?
I would agree with that, so I second that.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That concludes my understanding of the agenda. Are there Commissioner comments? I would like to remind you that at 10 o'clock, we are going to have a joint meeting with the CTUIR Board of Trustees. So at this point, Commissioner comments? Anything you'd like to say?
I would just like to say this is my farewell meeting at the Board of Commissioners. After having been here for eight years, I can tell you that it has been truly rewarding to me to be part of Umatilla County, to serve the citizens and the staff at the county. And I will miss being here and being part of the discussions as we move the county ahead. But although I will not be here, I will be watching you, so.
Well, we certainly appreciate your service, Commissioner Alfred. I'm only saddened by the fact that were we not under the current conditions, I'm quite sure that this room would be filled with well wishers and that something much, much more appropriate would be done on your behalf to acknowledge the fact this is your last meeting. I do also want to indicate for those who aren't aware that the Commissioners afforded Commissioner Alfred the opportunity to send the Christmas message to the staff, which is receiving tremendous feedback for your thoughtfulness and the manner in which you address the staff and wish them well. So we also wish you well in your retirement, but know that at least you'll be around for the BOP to board meetings and whatever else happens. So Commissioner Schaefer, would you like to add additional, what, excuse me, Commissioner?
Yesterday at the hospital board meeting was appointed to fill the position of Tom Wonsley, and I leave the county position open, so that'll be one that we will be needing to fill, backfill for, too. So one of our Commissioners will still serve on that board. Also appointed at that, at that meeting, or recommended, I should say, not appointed, because that recommendation comes back to this board to approve. Also recommended is Joe Piamara to fill the position of, I don't have it from me right now, Jim Setzer, Dr. Setzer.
Well, dear monumental nature of that assignment, I'm sure we'll have difficulty finding someone to take your place who has the time to do that, but we'll take that up shortly. Commissioner Schaefer?
I was able to sell for on that, on that position, on that basis.
I just want to thank Commissioner Alfred for all of his time he's put into office and his mentorship to me as a new commissioner. It was very invaluable, and I really appreciated it. So I know a lot of boards across the state don't have the relationship that we enjoy. So for that, I thank you, and I wish you luck in your community adventure. Thank you.
It's interesting that with the rate of turnover among Commissioners in Oregon at the present time, somewhat ironic that he would have served as matter to both of us. So that isn't happening much anymore. So any other comments from the Commissioners? We're adjourned.